Welcome to tonight's board meeting and then a board work session. Just by way of clarification, before we get started, this is something that has been kind of in the plan and in the works for a little while, a transition to having our board meetings alternate between a business meeting that involves public comment and time for the board to have a little more time to do work sessions and to wrestle with some issues and to learn about some things. So this has been kind of planned for about the last six months. So now that we're kind of getting into the swing of things, this will be the regular pattern. So that's why this format is a little bit different and the agenda looks just a little bit different. Because we're really trying to keep the business to a minimum and maximize our time to just have a work session and really talk about things and about our district and focus on education. So that is why this format is slightly different. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance and I've asked Director Bishop if he would say that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Superintendent Corden, your communications to the board this evening.
Thank you. Great to see all board members here tonight. Thank you for those who are joining us. Great to have this work session opportunity to rumble through some things here tonight. In terms of communication, review the agenda, it's not, there have been no changes to the agenda, but one item of communication we have received, two additional hires that are included within consent agenda tonight.
Thank you. Everyone should have received a consent agenda in their email. So the chair will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I saw motion.
Move second.
Any discussion or question about the consent agenda needed?
I second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as currently published, say aye. All right, I'm now going to adjourn our regular board meeting for this evening and we are going to move into our work session. Superintendent Corden.
All right, thank you very much, Board Chair. I'm excited for an opportunity to kind of work with the board on a couple items we want to bring to the board tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let's take a look here. Put this into presentation mode. All right, well, tonight, we have two items on our board work session. Again, this is, these are opportunities to ask questions, become more familiar with things. I think from a governance standpoint, really ask questions around how are, you know, the board's goals, are they being met by the actions that we are undertaking in the district to improve outcomes for kids? So two things tonight, we have to discuss, first is an overview of what we're really doing at our secondary schools. We're gonna focus on that tonight. I do want to thank Dr. Joe Weber, who recently received her doctorate, Principal at RHS, Ben Bentia, Principal at Fremont, and Nikki App, Principal at Joe Lane for their work and kind of putting this together. We've done quite a bit of work over the last year in articulation between our secondary schools and I'm excited for their presentation tonight. And I'll turn it over to them in just a minute. After we, the board asked questions and we kind of dig into this a little bit, we'll have some time set aside to get an update on current mandates and also have a discussion about current health and safety mandates for the board to discuss and wrestle with tonight. So I'll go ahead and get us started here. We do have time at the end of this presentation, but if board members have questions, feel free to ask those in between, but there will be time set aside at the end for this. The intent tonight is really to get a state of the schools, we're going to start with our secondary schools, to get an idea of what we're doing to help students be successful. I want to go ahead and just start by, before we kick it over to our administrators to lead us through some things tonight, just talk for a few minutes about our overall hopes for our kids and our overall strategy to deliver on what we want for our children. In 2019, when I arrived at the school district, spent quite a bit of time taking a look at where we were at and maybe some areas of things we were doing well and areas we needed to really improve on. And in 2019, worked with board to develop and adopt as a school district this strategic plan. This is now year three, we're starting year three of a strat plan. I think this will require us to really revisit here toward the end of the year. But these five areas really became areas that I felt strongly, I think we as a school district felt strongly, that we needed to focus on in order to get where we want to with our kids. And I want to just talk just a few minutes about this, it's important that we know this document and understand this document. You know, in the center of this are children and that's really what we want to have be our focus. I've said since I've gotten here, we have amazing kids and these kids are smart and they're wonderful and oftentimes our challenge is to design a system that actually can, that can keep up with how darn smart our kids are and also accommodate the needs that our kids have. It's my expectation that our kids here will have at least a years worth of growth for years with the school. And that's both academically, but it's also about the whole child, that kids can grow and develop socially and emotionally and have the kind of skills that are going to help them be successful. In order to do this, there are really five areas I've identified that are key priorities. We've put budget behind these and a plan behind each of these. I'll just talk about these quickly here. The first on the top left is about instruction. Our teachers need resources to effectively meet the needs of our kids. This is not a school district and I have, I have really been intentional about this. Oftentimes the blame kind of falls with teachers across the country. And the truth is, this is my responsibility to make sure our staff have the training and tools to meet the needs of our kids. I hold myself accountable for that. And we need to make sure that kids are receiving timely instruction and that requires us to make sure that teachers and when I say teachers, I mean all staff have the skills to meet kids' needs and to scaffold, to think about differentiation. I'll tell you one quick thing, I won't blabber this too much, but it is not uncommon. In fact, it is very common and has been the case in the three years I've been here, including this year, that if you take a kindergarten class, that will have kids that have more of a delta in proficiency. Let's just take reading comprehension for a minute, then they do years of life on the earth. So think about that for just a minute. We have kids that are over five years apart in a kindergarten class. Let's just pick on reading comprehension and they're only five. And so the question is, how do we design a system that can meet the needs of each kiddo? And that's what I mean by timely and appropriate instruction. So move on to the right here, another focus area for us, we're still working on is making sure that our kids are seen, that they feel safe in our schools, that they are heard and they're respected. And I want that to be the case for everybody who walks in our school. I want our staff to feel that way. I want our community to feel that way. Effective operations, it's important that we have high quality operational strategies and and systems in place as we're running a relatively complex organization. We have 800 employees, hundreds of millions of dollars in assets, thousands and thousands of kid, tens of thousands of stakeholders and an operating budget just north of $100 million. So making sure we've set up effective operations to know what's happening and to think strategically about the next moves when you may need to make this year or in the next 10 to 50 years. Leadership development, want to make sure our leaders are the best leaders in the business. We're really working on how to think about, and that starts with me, about how to be a leader in terms of, really, how do you lead? And this just isn't with COVID, but how do you lead organizations from being good to great? And then the idea of systems development, I don't necessarily want to be data driven because I've seen systems that get driven off a cliff by data, but really be data informed. So how do we know that things are working? How do we know our investments are making a difference for children? And so we've seen an evidence of some of these things is with pers obligation bonds and other things we've done recently to think about our systems. So that is our, that's the overall 30,000 foot view of how we are organized. So I want to turn some time over right now to Jill and Nikki and Ben to talk about what this, how this plan is operationalized currently with our students in grades six through 12. Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Jill, Nikki, Ben.
Was there a slide before that, Jared, or is that the next one?
There certainly may have been, and this could be driver error here. But my thing is, go, there we go.
There we are. All right, thank you. Something that Nikki and Ben and I talk a lot about and that we all believe in is that when a kid finds their spark and their passion in school, they're more engaged in that learning. And we see this high correlation between when kids find a thing that they're connected to, they feel engaged with, they feel successful with, that they do better in school and therefore our high school graduation rates increase. So that's one of our goals collectively is keeping students engaged so that students can find where their personal passion or where their, their spark is in education. So example of this is, is our robust CTE program at Roseburg High School. When students are focused on the CTE program, they, then they go through that program. We have a graduation rate of nearly 95%. So it shows that kids who find their thing, stay in their, their thing and they'll stay at school and graduate at a higher rate. And I think all of us could, could talk about what our thing was in high school or in middle school, whether it was music or art or welding or it may be that science was your thing, but we know that students do better when they find their thing. So that's been a focus for all of us at both, at all three of our schools at both levels. So next slide, Jared. So Nikki and Ben can talk about what that looks like at the middle school.
Sorry. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay. So one of the things that I always communicate to, like new hires or potential new hires, when I talk about our district, when we talk about the structure of our district is, one of the things that I'm super proud of is our one high school town. And the reason I'm super proud about one high school town is it's at that six day classification and they get, we get to provide opportunities to our kids in Roseburg at the same level as a lot of the major metropolitan schools in the state of Oregon. And that CTE program is just one of many examples of the things that the high school offers to students. And I'm blessed and fortunate to be able to try to support that as best we can. And there are some things that we do at the middle school to try to support that. In the last couple of years, we've had the opportunity to be able to just expand on that. For example, we've, we've increased our fine arts and performing arts offerings for students. We now have a graphics design and an applied arts program where we used to just only have applied arts. We added a wood shop program to help kind of engage students at an early age that might be interested in doing something like that at the high school level. We have creative writing and modern issues and natural resources, all very similar to things that are offered at the high school level. And we're super excited about being able to give students at an early age an opportunity and some taste of different things they could be interested in beyond just the traditional academic options that we have in the district. Nikki, you want to talk a little about after school club and athletics?
Sure. So some after school clubs that we are offering currently at the middle school level include things like some robotics clubs. We have, Joe Lane has two very, very active robotics teams. And our robotics advisor is working with an advisor that's looking at coming on over at Fremont to, so that they can build their program as well. They've had a program, but their, their advisor retires. So now someone else is going to be taking over the reins over there. But the, the clubs go beyond that. We, we offer FBLA clubs. We offer clubs that, we have a spirit club at Joe Lane that allows students who may not be on the athletic teams, but can come and support some of the athletic activities, whether it be watching the game together as a group of friends. It could be locker stickers, it could be those kinds of things. We have clubs that are driven by student interests. So students may come to us and be interested in an anime club or anything that they may be interested in. At the time, I have a group now that's kind of interested in a skateboarding club. Finding an advisor for a skateboarding club is a little tough because not many middle school teachers are one to hop on their skateboard. But we have kids that are approaching us with things that they're interested in and they care about and they're very, very good at. And, and that's exciting. Our athletic programs, we recently made a shift in the, the league that our two middle schools participate in that is giving us the opportunity to grow the skill and the competitive competitions that our athletes are participating in by joining the Psalm Sac League down in Southern Oregon. We're very excited about that because anything we can do to build the skills of our athletes and send the high school young athletes that are ready to compete at the six A level, we're excited about. I wanted to touch back a little bit on the programs that we've added recently, the wood shop program, fine arts and our music departments. I would say over the last three years, there has been a more focused and intentional effort on the part of the instructors at the middle school level and, and the high school level and connecting and meeting with one another. How can our, our program support your program? So we're not operating in isolation, but rather building a program that supports kids from sixth grade all the way through their 12th grade experience in, in those, in those areas. I know the data Jill talked about, mentioned specifically CTE programs and a high graduation rate with kids who are connected in those programs. And she shared in a meeting last week and said that, that number is probably true in some of our other programs such as our music programs, band choir, our, our drama program, that all of those, all of those programs are connections for kids that allow them to follow their passion and their spark. And we do our best at the middle school level to prepare them for those activities at the high school level.
All right, then at the high school level, when the, when the students from the middle school come over, they're exposed to a variety of things. And I agree with what Ben and Nikki both said, just about the opportunities at the high school because of the size. We're at the perfect size where we have enough, enough teachers and staff and students to create this wealth of opportunities for students, but also have that smaller school feel. One of the things we're very proud of is our nine CTE programs. We have business, culinary arts, early childhood education, agriculture, which includes forestry and vet tech, drafting, automotive manufacturing, construction, and we recently have added a certified nursing assistance training program as well as moving to diesel within our automotive. So we're very excited about those opportunities for our students. We, they are industry standard that love to have, invite you in to see what we have. Our staff meets with people in the community who give us advice and tell us what our kids need to be learning so that they can walk right out of the auto program and work, go straight into work. They can, we have students who are aluminum welders who can walk out of that classroom and have a job in aluminum welding. It's amazing, the, the equipment, the CNCs, the plasma cutters, the 3D printers, the, what our kids are exposed to. I'll get the student recently who went away to college and he said, you know, I had to kind of go backwards a little bit because what I've been working on in the classroom is, is at a higher level than what I'm exposed to in my college right now. So it's very exciting to, to see that. We do build on what the middle school is talking about in terms of buying performing musical arts. If you've had an opportunity to see our marching band in action with 150 students on that field competing at state level, their award winning band at a state level, but it also creates this community for kids to connect to. So something they're proud of, but the place where they belong as well. I could go on and on about the other electives we have in terms of journalism. Our Orange R, our yearbook is also award winning every year. We have advanced math and science courses that students want to engage in. Psychology, we have three different world languages. In every area that we teach here, there's a wide variety of opportunities for students. In addition to that, building on the individual clubs we have, and we also have kids create clubs that we hadn't thought about, a Hot Wheels club or it could be a chess club or just a group of students who have some passion. Kids came, want to do a skeet shooting. Now, we don't shoot on campus, but yet they want to gather together and talk about what that can look like because they're passionate about that. We have amazing CTSO programs, which are FBLA, FCC LA, Skills USA. And our students are competing at national level and winning awards at national levels. They are well known. We have students in leadership positions within the state and the national level as well. We do have 19 different athletic programs and you'll think of the traditional ones, basketball, baseball, softball, golf. But we also have equestrian and bowling. So a wide variety of athletic opportunities for students with 40 different individual teams. One of my goals is to hit each of these different levels and that keeps me busy just trying to make sure I see each team compete at some level. We have innovative technology and some of the board members who have been on here for a while, remember talking about the Z space lab that we ordered, which is virtual augmented reality where students can put on glasses and they could see a heart beating in 3D and turn it and open it. And it's amazing to see a, an atom in 3D and the way that it's connected or looking at the molecules. But it's amazing to see that. I'd love to share that as well. I'm in addition to the many other things I talked about, the 3D printers, plasma cutters, hydro dip and some machines I don't think I even know the name of because they're pretty incredible with our kids, for our kids. So we, we have a lot that sparks an interest and a passion in those students that keeps them engaged in schools and we're very proud of what we offer here at the high school. So next slide. In addition to finding the spark, we also want to keep our rigor and achievement levels high for students. So we strive to meet the students where they are currently and ensure that they are receiving at least that year's worth of growth. And that's what we expect of all, if not more than that. So we have been focused on our transition program between the eighth and ninth grade specifically, ensuring that kids are transitioning smoothly. And during this last several years, we've focused on this and recently our graduation rate has rose about 10% and we're over 86%, which is quite a bit above where the state average is. And we're anticipating that last year's students will be even higher than that. And so we're excited about the growth that we're offering here for our students as well as how we're competing across the state with our students in terms of graduation rate. And that's because of the spark, the passion, the rigor, the achievement, the instruction we're providing for students. Next slide. So Nikki and Ben can talk about the middle schools and the rigor and achievements that they have at their schools.
Let me, I'll go first this time. So in our building, resources and supports that we have in place, both for students and staff include our, our TOSs, which are, are our teachers on special assignments. And they focus on a number of things, but one of those being instruction and coach, helping to coach some of our new hire teachers, our first year teachers, second year teachers. They help with the Wednesday afternoon PD plans that our department leaders are in charge of implementing. But our TOSs help to make sure that that is helping, happening with fidelity, that, that we have goals that are achievable and attainable and that we have an action plan that helps support movement towards those goals. They can sit in on those team meetings to help facilitate those meetings. They can also see the work in action in the classroom to help figure out what is working and what is not, and what can we do to improve. We have instructional coaches that at the, at the district level that can come in and help support specific academic areas. For example, we use Melissa Plummer is her name and Carrie Sirmak in the past, who would come in and work with our math departments around the best practices in mathematics and would set up systems where teachers could go in and observe other teachers teaching and, and talk about what is it that we want to hear from kids? If, if good instruction is happening and kids are really grappling and thinking about the content that's being presented, what kind of, what should we hear from students? What, how can we take what students are saying and really glean what their understanding and what our, and our next instructional moves need to be in that moment? And we, we, we do that work and, and teachers are focused on those in the moment instructional moves that they need to make when they're meeting kids where they are based on their understanding of the comment, of, of the content. We structure our system. We have grade level houses, meaning that our staff is, are divided into two houses. So students are typically at, at Joe Lane, they're a member of the red house or the silver house, which means that they are assigned to a group of four teachers that are delivering their core instruction. And then those teachers work to support them across all of their, all of their content areas. So those grade level houses will pull together and they will be talking about kids and how they're achieving, kids who may be struggling. A student may be struggling in one room, but not another. So what, what are the good practices that are happening in one room that another teacher can use that will help support a student? If a student is achieving great things, is there something different that the team needs to do to continue to press and, and grow that student who needs a little bit extra? And what about the students who aren't? And what, how do we support them as a grade level team? And that includes not only those core teachers, but their elective teachers as well. As we watch not only the, the achievement progress students are making, but also is, is attendance something we need to be focusing on? How are they getting along socially and emotionally? Is there something else that, that we as a team need to be considering? All of those discussions happen in those grade level or house level team meetings. Ben, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, so Nikki talked a lot about just the support and the systems we have in place to grow teachers professionally and be able to impact student learning. In addition to that, we, we also look at assessment and like Jared said, we use that to inform some of the decisions we make when it comes to serving our students. So we have assessment teams that meet predominantly in the spring to help kind of determine where students are going to be placed in terms of core instruction as well as potential intervention. And that's done in a tiered model. And generally we look at three different types of data. One is assessment data, both district and state assessment. But we also look at, which happens to be one of the biggest indicators for graduation, classroom performance. And that's a really important piece to us when we look at how students are progressing within our system. And then as well as just teacher recommendation. And when we look at those three different prongs, that helps us kind of decide what support students need at a tiered level, whether they need core instruction or that they need an opportunity to also have some intervention that's in addition to their core, or if there are students who are excellent and are doing really well and trying to find ways to be able to engage them, whether that's clustering them as gifted and talented students or students that are accelerating already, or whether that means when you put them in some kind of inclusion class that provides some additional support. And then we have great meetings of the, when we have students that are put into tiered intervention. We have meeting, we have teams that come together once every six weeks and focus on determining whether the interventions we're providing to students are impacting them, that the change in the trajectory of their learning to try to get those students who are a little bit behind from their peers caught up to their peers. And they look at progress monitoring data to determine whether the instruction that we're providing is in fact impacting them instructionally. And then we make decisions based off of that to try to support them as they're, as they're moving through our system. And then again, kind of how I mentioned about the students who are already either on track or need a little bit of extra push. We have, we have teams that come together and intentionally think of ways to provide enrichment opportunities within the core to help engage those students who maybe either get, catch on to the curriculum super fast or maybe already know some of the materials we're providing. And then we cluster them within certain core classes and then are intentionally planning on ways to enrich those experiences for them. And then we have a couple of accelerated courses that happen in the area of mathematics in both seventh and eighth grade.
Ben, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is Frem, does Fremont do any of the, the grade level housing or instructional teams like Joe Lane's doing currently?
Yeah, yeah. So we have a blue team and a gold team at each grade level. We split them up by the four core classes. And then we have level teams that meet twice a month and we talk about specific kiddos. We talk, they talk about specific needs and they, they just focus on their group of kids. Yep.
Okay, awesome. And then I'll, just curious, is tag clustering, I know that tag, having a tag coordinator, that's a fairly new position in our district and that whole process is just really getting started, but is there clustering happening outside of math?
That's a good question. We have not branched out of mathematics yet, but there has been some conversations in the area of language arts and a little bit in science. But for the most part, it's fairly new to us. We just started doing it last year. And we predominantly do it actually in the sixth grade. And then in seventh and eighth grade, some of those kiddos that would have been clustered in sixth grade would have the opportunity to do the accelerated math classes in both seventh and eighth. But you're right, with, with the tag coordinator in the district, it's a fairly new system for us. And we are excited to engage in that and try to learn how to even better serve them.
Yeah, because it's, it's, yeah. I think that is something that we could see, I mean, at both middle schools. That the high school has naturally, just because they have so many credit, so many course options available, it's a little bit easier to just accelerate someone. But I know there used to be some accelerated English opportunities at Joe Lane. I don't know if there are currently. But that is something that, I, I mean, But that is something that, I, I mean. Partially because I think it's important to meet those kids' needs across the board and there are kids that are only. Tag and gifted in language arts. And so I feel like. That's something to recognize that those kids need an equal opportunity to have that challenge as the kids that are gifted in mathematics.
For sure. Yep. And there was, there was a long conversation about that with the math department. And that our sixth grade team really took about two or three days actually, and they looked at each one of their. Each one of their units that they taught and even dug as deep as each lesson. And intentionally put enrichment opportunities into those to, to plan for supporting our, our talented and gifted kids. And it's something definitely we should look into considering for doing across different content areas.
I had a question for the, the houses, the grade level houses. The gold and silver or. Red, red and silver. Do the kids, I, I mean, is there? Is there any assessment to be in one versus another? Or is there a higher, a low or? No.
No, it, it really, it's, it's more random than not. The, the computer generates schedule, we use a schedule builder in synergy and it generates the schedules. So that we, no, the goal there really truly is to minimize the number of adults. That. That minimize the number of adults that a student could come in contact with, but rather also organize the adult. So that when, when a grade level team comes together and there's eight teachers from the grade level there that we're not like, who has this kid? And we're pointing out all these different teachers that a whole group can get together and they all share the same. The shame, same group of students. And those students then often see each other in classes. So they're, they're more familiar with certain kids. They make connections. They make friendships within that houses. It just makes our, our bigger school feel just a little bit, a little bit smaller.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Shall I move on to the high school? Okay, um, for a Oregon diploma, students do need to earn twenty four credits over their four years at the high school. Although we have many students that graduate with even more credits than that. I think it's important to know this very specific in the area that the students must earn these credits and it's changed since I was in school. So for example, students need to earn three, three years of, or three credits of math and they must be algebra one or above. So all of our students who earn a standard diploma have at least algebra two, if not more than that. And the same thing we have in science, that all of our students are taking physics, chemistry and biology. And every student's expected to reach those levels. In addition to that, they have four years of English. They have two years of PE and health, three years of social sciences. And three credits in either CT art or a world language and it could be a combination of those. And so the, and then six elective credits where they can choose whatever they want. So this Oregon diploma means all of those with the rigor of achieving that algebra two and achieving all of those science courses as well. In addition to that, we offer numerous dual credit and AP courses. You can see the next bullet says we have two hundred and fifty or more available college. Credits at Roseburg High School and that's in connection with UCC, other community colleges in our region based on the programs that they offer. And Southern Oregon University. We've had students graduate from Roseburg High School with an associate's degree. And we have many students who will graduate and already moving into their sophomore year or more based on the college presence they've earned at the high school. We offer AP courses in ten different areas, everything from art history to US history. To APCC calculus and a variety of areas, students have the opportunity to take AP courses. We also offer something called a seal of bilinguacy. And this is a rigorous achievement where students must demonstrate that they can. Meet certain standards in world, at a world language that they can receive a seal on a diploma that says they are a bilingual student. Based on the education that they've received here. So was it a really a neat thing to see students earn that? And that they have to do quite a bit of assessment in speaking and writing and reading in that, that language to earn that, that seal. At Roseburg High School, we also have a focus in academic rigor and instruction. And you heard from Ben and Nikki, the many ways that we support our students or teachers as well in improving their instruction. Because we know that when teachers are learning together and they're growing together and their instruction improves, that benefits the learning of our students. So that is a continuous theme, something we push, holding those high standards for our students. Because we know when we have those high standards and we believe in them, that they will reach that. So that's something that, that we have, have worked on here. So the rigor and achievement in both of the schools, there's a lot of opportunity for students to, to meet those rigorous levels in a way that's appropriate to their. Their level and education. Right, next slide. So the next area is the whole child. So our district, we have a lot of staff or specialists that, that target the mental and social. Emotional wellbeing of our students. Research shows that when students do well, when they have strong social emotional skills, they also will do well academically. So that's one of the focus as well for us in both of the levels. I would say PK twelve plus in our school district focused on the social emotional wellbeing and the whole, the whole child. So we have a new social emotional learning coordinator that's helping support that culture of safety and respect. And growing the skills of our students through that. Next slide.
Who is that?
Her name is Mindy Endicott and so Michelle maybe can, wants to share a little bit more about that.
And our social emotional learning coordinator was hired this year using SIA funds. So Mindy Endicott took on that role and will be supporting the district K twelve.
Is she at the administrative office? She is.
Well, her office is here, but she spends her time out in the schools most of the time.
Right in the middle of schools, want to talk about the supports they have the whole child?
Sure. So both of our middle schools have two academic counselors that are. On site that help students in a variety of ways. One major function that most students across the building have contact with them about is scheduling. So they help with schedules and making sure that if a student needs an adjustment to a schedule. Or whether it be that we need to find a different academic placement for them. Or they are choosing a different elective option, something like that. The counselors are their main point of contact there. But they also are available and are often utilized when there are. Things that are happening for kids at school that are keeping them from being able to, to really concentrate and be engaged in their learning. It could be social problems with other, other students. It could be. They're dealing with some, an incident at home, it maybe, maybe trauma from home. It could be, they are first line of defense if students are showing any signs of self harm. Or we feel like there may need to be a risk assessment. Counselors are involved with, with that. They. They are, they are around for and, and here to support students in a variety of ways. Our school psychologists are on campus. They help a lot with assessment for students who may need special education services. They do a lot of the cognitive testing that goes into a report that helps us determine whether a student may qualify for. Special education services or not. They are also very instrumental in helping us write behavior support plans for kids. By helping us to complete functional behavior assessments. So if we're having students who are struggling at school in specific classes. And we've tried a variety of interventions without really seeing improvement. We may involve the school psychologist to help us figure out what is the function of the behavior that we're seeing in class. And what are some strategies or moves that we need to make as a staff that can better support them? So that they're successful in school. The last number of years, we've had the gift of mental health therapists in our building. That was new roughly four years ago where. Counselors from, and therapists from Compass Adapt have been school-based and their offices are housed in our buildings. As opposed to students having to travel to downtown, to their, their service center downtown. Most, the, the goal is every school has one and sometimes hiring is difficult. So that doesn't always happen the way we would like. But we have seen a lot of success with having the mental, mental health. Right there in our building. It alleviates some work for families who may have to travel back and forth to appointments. If, if the therapist is on campus and they can set up meetings once a week and we can pull them out of class for a meeting. A counseling session that helps. It also helps with just problem solving at school when that individual is right there. If there's a, a, a big issue with a student, they can help deescalate that. They can also be part of just the planning process in those, those grade level meetings. If a team of teachers is, is having struggles that involves one student, they can be involved in that conversation as well. We have skills trainers that are assigned at both middle schools and. This past year, especially with. Remote learning and, and comprehensive distance learning that we were doing, our skills trainer. Did a lot of work with students who were, were struggling with the remote setting. She could meet with those students over Zoom to. To work on organization skills. How do we need to manage your time a little better? How can we set up a schedule for you? She could hop in and join their classes with them so she could hear when instruction was happening and then pull them out later to. To recap, you know, remember what the assignment was. Can you still find your paper? Do you remember how to navigate on the canvas page? Skill, those lagging skills that sometimes can look like kids. Just aren't, that they, they're not engaged or they're apathetic and don't care about the work. When really there's a skill that they're missing that is keeping them from being able to stay organized enough to get things completed. So skill train, skills trainers can help us identify what are the, what are the barriers for kids that are keeping them from fully engaging? And then what, what skill do they need from us in order to, to get them back into the classroom and engaged? We also use our skills trainer as a first, kind of first line of defense along the social emotional. Lines when we have a student in class who's having a hard time staying in class. Maybe they're being disruptive, maybe they're refusing to work. Maybe they're, they're upset and crying. They can go to her and she can kind of try to get them regulated again. Get kids to a place where they're ready to talk and do some problem solving. And then hopefully transition back into the classroom quickly so that they don't, they don't end up getting farther behind. And compounding their problem. Ben, you want to jump in?
You just have one of those?
Yes, both middle schools each have one.
Wow. Five of those.
Yeah, and, and our TOSA actually plays a lot of that role as well. And so does our, so does our school counselors, so does our administrators, et cetera. So we definitely have other adults that support that part of the system. And that's the reason why TOSA was also listed on there as part of the whole child. We talked a little bit already about this small learning community and how we break up our grade levels into smaller. Small learning communities. The other two, I, I think are also super important, but before I get into those, I just, I, I wanted to mention that. And this really ties into the whole child. Jared did a fantastic job of starting off the school year and connecting with all of our teachers and all of our staff. And he had a really powerful message. And one of the things that I really gleaned on to, and I've been, I've been talking about a lot this week. Because our, our school district does a really good job of thinking about different strategies and different systems to support kids. Whether we're talking about academics or behavior or whatever. But one of the things that Jared mentioned, and it was a quote that he put up, was that. Despite all those strategies, despite all those systems you put in place, culture will eat strategy for breakfast all day long. Right? And so one of the things that I'm super proud about in our tire system. But especially with Nikki and Jill and us working together, is we, we focus a lot of time on our culture within our building. And it starts with our staff. We have to make sure that our staff are ready to be able to serve kids. And so as leaders in our buildings, we, we dedicate a lot of our time and energy. And making sure the culture within the adults is where it needs to be in order for them to be able to impact kids. And we, we try to provide a system in place and try to provide a structure in place. Where adults are, are proud to be part of a, a larger community, part of, be part of a, a bigger purpose. And so I'm really proud of that. And so there's, there's lots of things that we do when it comes to providing students support socially, emotionally. And probably our biggest thing is prior tier one intervention, which we do with all students, is our school-wide behavior lessons. So we have a PBIS team that comes together. It's, it's, it's made of administrators, counselors, teachers. Instructional staff. And they, they look at major behaviors and major. Lessons that we think is important to teach to all students. And we develop those lessons and we teach them every single week. And that's kind of our foundation when it comes to establishing the culture that we think is important. And that provides highly effective instruction academically as well. And we, we, we connect our core values to that. We teach those values. We model those values and then we have systems in place to help kind of reteach those in a tiered model. And in our academic counselor is part of that, our school psychologist is part of that, a mental health therapist is part of that, our skills trainer is a part of that. But recognizing that students need to be explicitly taught some of the behaviors and some of the expectations we expect of them. And then be able to also help them with their social emotional needs as well. And I'm super proud of that. And we have lots of systems in place that helps that. And the things that you see within the middle schools very easily translates over to the high school and they see things very similarly there. And I think that helps a lot with just that continuity as students are working, are going through our system.
And I.
Is that taught? Weekly, this, or what's the?
Yeah, I, I think Jill's, Jill's team is doing a little bit different this year. I'm excited to hear a little bit more about that. But at the middle schools, it's taught every single week. So on Wednesdays during early release, we carve out about fifteen minutes total that it's attached to our first period class. And each adult on campus spends a little bit of time teaching a, a behavior lesson. And it's organized by themes connected to our core values. And then it's also just part of our, our daily and weekly routines that we do.
Ben, I was also going to say, and, and this is something that I really think over the last couple of years I've seen improvement on. Is. You know, every teacher in the building is a skills trainer. And actually, when you talked about the first line of support for some of the mental health and some of the warning signs. I would say even some of your school, like some of the secretaries and librarians. And talking to my own kids, those are often the people that are really watching out for that whole child. And I think staff wide, I think you guys are doing a great job of building a culture of, we're going to take care of these kids. And we're going to make sure that every kid has an adult that they feel connected to. And you know, I mean, Ms. Cindy at the middle school, I mean, she was Emily's person. And you know, and that connection was so tight and so powerful and was her safe place. And, and I just want to give props to you guys because I do, I really have seen an intentional culture shift. That on top of all of these specialists that are so, in such that niche. I do think that all of your support staff and your teachers are really doing an excellent job in paying attention to the whole child.
I, I really appreciate that Rebecca. I, I talked to my staff a, a lot about. The, the foundation to learning is that relationship and connections that students make with the adults that are supporting them. Because students are not going to take risks if they don't trust somebody. And we all know that for us to be able to learn, we have to be willing to take risks. Kids aren't going to come to a class and say, I don't, I don't know anything. That's okay. They have to feel trusted and they have to feel. The ability to be able to go out all that and, and just take that risk. And so I appreciate you making that comment.
I'd like to add to Rebecca that I, I agree that the support staff. They, they really are on the lookout. For example, I'll have some, a gal from lunch duty who will come up to me. And want me to pull up a camera so that she can show me one girl at a specific table. That she noticed didn't talk to anybody else at lunchtime. Who is this girl and can you tell me, does she have any other friends? Because I didn't see her talk to one person. And you know, that, that is, that is what we want. We want people that are, that are watching that closely. Because when I talk with parents about their biggest fears and their children moving to little school, moving to middle school. I often hear those exact words. I'm so afraid that they won't have any friends and they're going to be sitting in a corner and no one will notice. And so, you know, that is something that we never want to happen. We want our staff to have their eyes open and be noticing. If um, if somebody's needing some support.
Okay, um, as students are transitioning then from the middle school where we've heard there's a safe. Space, there's community, there's connections, moving from that space to a high school of, looks like seventeen hundred and fifty students this year. Um, can be a very scary thing for students and we purposely work on that transition. Uh, Ben, Nikki and um, our staff here. Meet before the students get here and we go over each student. We look at what their course grades are. We look at their attendance. We look at the supports they need. And before we even see their faces on this campus, we know the supports that they need to make that transition happen smoothly. In addition to that, we have a program called Link Crew and it's on their first days, uh, first day that they come onto campus. Students are connected with a leader, a student leader, that becomes their kind of guide to what this high school look like. And it's a great way for students to connect with other students. So. They get this feeling of what high school is like. Our ninth grade students enter into a small learning community where they have the same English wellness and science teacher. Those teachers wrap their arms around those ninety kids and they create this house. So we have seven of them here. Where the, the staff meet once a month and they go over the data about these kids. They look at the kids, is this. The kids struggling in your class, well, they're struggling in mine. Shall we call them in? Shall we work with them? Who can help them? What do we need? And we create these individual plans for every student. So we're looking at over four hundred and fifty students entering Roseburg High School. We know them before they've even entered here and we're gonna catch them before they fall. To make sure that we have plans in place to help them in this important transition. We also add the tenth grade small mind communities this year where our world um, history. And our English teachers are combined together to support students because we know the tenth grade year. This year is gonna feel different than ever in the past because of the pandemic and what students have experienced. We also have added the tenth grade link day to help transition students back into school. Because over summer school, we saw the anxiety around the students of coming back into the building. We want to support them within that. As Ben said, this year we are adding an advisory and advisory is going to be by grade level. So students, um, every adult in, every certified adult in the building will have an advisory. And they will be meeting with either this group of ninth graders, tenth graders, eleventh grade or twelfth grade. Because we identified that the needs of the ninth grade students are very different than the needs of the twelfth grade students. And these adults will meet with them over four years. So can you imagine being adults and having this group of kids as ninth graders and meeting with them throughout their four years here? And watching their success when they graduate. They're gonna work with them on college and career skills. They're gonna work with them on organizing on their grades, on their path. Plans forward and other supports we can do within the school. We have very clear lessons and supports and plans for what that looks like. There's a web of supports here at the school and some of those come from teams, some of those come from individuals. We have five academic counselors to support our over seventeen hundred students. Whether it's a college and career center that helps support students and what their path after school looks like. And right now we have about seventy-five percent of our students identifying that they want to go on to a college. About fifty-five percent of our students want to start at a two-year college and about twenty percent are looking at a four-year college. So we have between five and ten percent that go other places such as a trade school, military or straight into the workforce. But we identified every year to ensure that we know where our students are going and we're providing those right supports for our students. Um, we also have teams like our ninth grade success team, our um, individual student services team that likes to individual kids to support. We have an attendance monitor that just identifies kids that are struggling with attendance. And that could be a whole nother conversation around the way that we support kids within this web. We also have school psychologists, mental health therapists through our teen health center and through adapt. Um, as well as a co- um, connection with UCC, um, supporting students who are first year college students with upward bound. The uh, educational talent search and our school to work coordinator. So there's a variety of supports and services for students to. Ensure that each are supported within their plan during high school and after high school. Roseburg High School has a dropout rate of point six four percent. We're very proud of that. So where our graduation rate is coming, you know, ninety percent ish, we also are hanging on to our students. And hanging on to them means that they want, they belong, they have a place and we're not letting kids slip through the cracks and disappear. And a school of seventeen hundred students, sometimes people think, well, maybe you're gonna get lost. Maybe, you know, it'd be easy for kids to disappear. I'm gonna tell you, we. The, the staff here at the school does not let that happen. We make sure every kid has a place, they're connected, and if they're struggling, we're there to support them. Right, next slide Jared. On the horizon, we're excited about some things that we're bringing into Roseburg High School and growing as we continue to improve and get better. One of the things with uh, Rose, um, moving into Roseburg High School and incorporating here is we're bringing the GED program inside of Roseburg High School. So we have students that will come onto our campus and spend half a day working towards their GED. And then they also have the opportunity to take electives and engage in other things here at the high school. So we're very excited about what that's going to bring and how we can continue to support students a variety of ways. We're growing our connections with UCC, with our new president, UCC. We've, we've met, we're talking about how we can increase those connections. Because having that community college right here in our town, with that strong connections only gonna help uh, make us better. I mentioned the nursing program and how we had students who. Uh, last year we had five students who graduated with their CNA and went right into the workforce. And this year we're starting another program with that. That's a wonderful connection with UCC and what an amazing opportunity for our students. And I also mentioned that we are expanding our auto program to include D-Sol. Uh, we're looking at connections with UPS and some other organizations here in our community to bring in D-Sol. And train our kids so that they could go right into the workforce because we know we need more mechanics in this area. Uh, I don't know, Michelle, if you want to talk about the steam teachers in addition?
Sure, thank you. And this year in our elementary schools, sorry, I'm getting. Getting feedback. And this year in our elementary schools, we will have four steam teachers. These were hired with our, funded with our SIA funds. And they will be on a two-week schedule, so every two weeks they will be visiting each of our elementary schools. The whole team goes in for a full day. And they will be, be providing um, steam lessons, hands-on activities. Robotics, um, lots of fun and exciting things, but also addressing the um. NGSS, the science standards from the district. And then that will support K twelve. Moving up into the middle schools and the high schools.
I think I speak for Nikki and Ben that we would love to have you come see our campus in action because we can talk all we want here. But when you see the kids doing the things they do, and it's just amazing. So we would love to have you come and walk through the campus and learn with us. And so we could share even more with you all. Thank you, Jared.
All right, thanks so much. I really appreciate it. Uh, Jill, Nikki, Ben, appreciate the, the time putting that together. I'm gonna just turn it back to the board in the work session. If there's anything that you wonder about, anything you noticed, anything that excites you or you think you need more information on. Um, as we just kind of give you a state of the schools, starting with our secondary schools.
Can I start? I have uh, three, three questions. Um, I am aware that there are seven. Active white gang members in Roseburg. What are we doing about the gang problem? Two, it's a known fact in Roseburg that you can buy any drug you want. Doing the school use underneath the Bella Street Bridge. Three, what is the demographics of the people of TAG? Do you have any members, students that are people of color?
All right, three great questions. Thank you, Director Johnson. Uh, anybody wanna start with number one and two?
Well, I can start with um, number one, that um, Howard, thanks for, for bringing that up in terms of gangs. And that's something that we, we do have board policy on. We look for, um, I think the biggest thing that we do is that connection with our police force. Um, they're able to provide us with what's happening within the community, what we need to look for. They keep, we send them to training, keep them, they keep us current on what to look for within. Um, either the gang activity or, or drugs and what the newest thing may be happening, how we can keep our eye out for that. And how we address that at the level. Um, we do work hard to keep our students here safe on campus. And if we see vaping, if we see drug use, if we have any indication of that, we do investigate that. We do. Um, deal with that and we do provide supports for students who may have been using in that way. So I would say our connection with our SROs and our police force and the way that they help educate us on that. Uh, we have security on campus. We have uh, two security officers and we have two um. Support staff, security support staff. In addition to that, that help monitor that. And we educate our staff as well to what to look for around both drug use and. Um, and gang activity.
Yeah, I appreciate that Jill. Um, I mean, clearly there, you know, we, we uh, I think the county in general. Um, has an epidemic right now with drug use and um, unfortunately our kids are not immune to that. I will call out uh, Ed VRL, our safety coordinator, who's done an awesome job coordinating with um. Our county and uh, local law enforcement. Um, it is something we talk about often. Um, that probably some of the most important data on this is when we look at the student surveys around safety. For the most part, our kids feel generally safe at school. Um, uh, you know, I, I, we wanna have an impact well beyond school in terms of. Teaching kids the importance of staying in school away from drugs and away from gangs. Um, it's not, it's not something we're a hundred percent at as kids make choices, but uh, those are things we definitely rumble with.
We talk about the whole child, as we talk about finding their spark, as we find, talk about having that connection at school, those are things that also fight both of those. And we'll continue to support kids in that way, um, knowing that there sometimes need additional. A spark, that connection, that rigor, those goals, those connections with adults are all things that help combat that as well.
And if I can say something else, um, faster or, or, I, I will look into that. I'll talk to Officer Nott about that. Um, usually uh, uh, taggers, or they call them tough uh, artist groups. Um, they tag one location and they have wars with each other. And um, usually when you see that, there's a lot of graffiti everywhere. And um, looking around Roseburg, we don't see that much, but I will check into it. I don't know if we have, I don't think we have seven active gangs in uh, Roseburg. Um, I know that Officer Nott has said that there's wannabe gang members that, you know, try to play the part. But I will definitely look into it. Uh, we collaboratively talk just about every day about things going on in the school.
I would take you on a cruise of Roseburg and show you all the seven gang tags that you call graffiti, the tags, and I could point them out to you. I'll, just give me, give me a call and I'll take you for a ride.
I, I would love that.
And I, and I'm sure that at one time, we as a board tried to write a policy about gang that was flavored towards people of color. Only to discover that these seven active gangs are all white.
Right, and we, we just invested in the juvenile justice online as well. And uh, that's something that um, instead of. Uh, educationally will show um, you know, kids the, the harm of graffiti, what it does and so forth. It's been uh, very successful. In Glide and in Winston. And so uh, we're bringing that on board.
You can see some gang activity starting as low as fifth grade. They don't wait till high school. They start indoctrinating them, getting them primed and groomed and whatever the word we like to use. So by the time they're eighth, ninth, tenth graders, they're diehard gang members. You can see it in the color of the clothes they wear, you can see the way they act, all these things. If you're open and exposed to it. I'm not saying that we haven't, haven't been open to it. I haven't seen, said we haven't been exposed to it. But I don't think we take it as serious as it really is. It's a serious problem in Roseburg. Very serious problem. And I'm aware of it.
Director Johnson, as far as your um, tag question, I don't have the demographics in front of me, but I'm happy to get those for you. And I can send them to you tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
You know, Director Johnson, I will say, one thing that has happened with the tag program that is a big improvement. Is that, you know, a few years ago, there was not a tag coordinator in the district. And so all of the kids in the tag program. Either had to be, you know, a teacher picked them out or the parents, you know, they were kind of a self-referred thing, which really is not fair. And it, it definitely selects a certain population. And so one of the really great things that I know they implemented. And I believe it happened last year, was the first year, but every third grader in the entire district got tested. You know, so then that goes out to every kid in every school. We're looking at, you know, every, we're gonna start watching for those kids who pop. In every school. So they're not just coming from places where they have a lot of parent involvement who are self-identifying. And seeking out that help. Kids that might not have the support at home, but have those aptitudes are gonna get found. And so I think that's. I just think that's a great thing that our district has implemented, but it's new. I, I think last year was the first year that they did across board testing.
That's correct, Becky. It's um, all of our second graders. And they are screened in October. And um, we have a, a tag specialist in each of our buildings that's supported by our tag coordinator that gives those assessments to the students.
I, I appreciate that information. But what I'm saying to you, if the evaluators of tags have underlying hidden biases. People of color are not gonna get picked. So we need to ensure as a board that is open across all demographic lines. And not just fit to a select few. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to share that on the tag screener with you, Director Johnson.
They're, they're using a nationally standardized test. I think they're using the COGAT. That's nationally standardized and used. Um, across the country and screened for biases and everything. It's the same test my kids took in North Carolina. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a standardized test that's, that's screened for biases to make sure that we really.
They've been proven in academic world that the standardized test is biased. And I have proof of that.
Are there any other, any other questions or thoughts about this six twelve kind of presentation? Anything you have a wondering about? Anything uh, Jill, Ben, Nikki or I can address for you? Yes, Director Lee, I think you're on mute.
It's so unlike me to be muted. Um, I heard the discussion about spark and passion. And my mind was going, uh, you can do all these things to, to give kids reasons to want to go to school. But what do you do with the kids who are really just turned off and don't want to go? And then you did this marvelous presentation about all of the outreach services that are available. And all of the things that the teachers and the staff are trying to do to identify and bring in kids who are. Um, who are not uh, uh, being active. And you answered all my questions. So I was gonna have nothing to say, but uh, I couldn't resist it and just be, be shut here. I'll, I'm gonna be watching to see. Oh, whether or not when I deal with kids in uh, criminal circumstances and divorces and uh. Child dependency foster care cases, uh, if, if I see kids who don't seem to be showing that spark and passion, I'm, I'm gonna be. Curious. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that would be uh, interesting feedback indeed. I, I think the thing I'll, we're gonna shift uh, gears here a little bit to mandates in a minute, but the thing I'll. I'll just reiterate is, is as an organization, what we want for our kids, I expect also for our staff and our parents. I mean, we want staff. And this was alluded to tonight by, by um, Ben, Nikki and Jill. We want staff who have a passion to be educators. And see the great responsibility and opportunity that honorable profession is to work uh, with kids. We want staff who are challenged and that they understand the achievement and rigor that um, really can be attained in this work. It's amazing work. It's never undone. I've often said it's a lot easier than uh, rocket science. Cause getting to the moon is a lot more predictable than thirty kids sitting at a desk at the beginning of the year. And uh, I want people to have the, to, to really feel like, we say to our, to our, I say to my staff all the time, we're not a, we gotcha. Place, we're, we've got you. And that same ethic of culture is whether, with our um, our staff. And then really, we want to focus on the whole child, or in this case, the whole staff member and the whole family. And so. Um, I'm proud of our, of our leaders doing the right work. Always, it's never perfectible, right? But it's always about getting closer um, to great than just being good or just being okay. And I'm, I'm, I'm proud of some of the efforts and we're gonna continue to, to get after that. Uh, again, thank you. Um, Ben, Nikki, Jill, appreciate your work on that. And again, I think the invitation stands, if board members wanna go see things in action, please reach out. Please become familiar. Please go talk to some kids and see what it's meant to them. That's probably the most important thing we can do. All right, we're gonna shift a little bit to, um, I'm gonna share my screen again. And we are gonna shift to, somebody can find it. Yeah, here we go. Uh, we're gonna shift to, there we go. A little bit about, I'm gonna zip through some slides here real quick, uh, and we're gonna jump into state mandates and I'll turn it over uh, to uh, Madam Chair Larson. So we, for a little bit of context here, uh, over the last couple of weeks. So we, for a little bit of context here, uh, over the last couple of weeks, we've had uh, some new state mandates. Things have went from uh, local control back to state control, uh, specifically with masks and vaccinations. Those two things have been a shift in the practice of the state. Um, to kind of just talk generally about mandates, there were a hundred and twenty-two by my count last year. Mandates relative to uh, schools and operational schools last year. Uh, right now, we actually have fewer. We actually have fewer state mandates than many people I think may uh, may know about. They feel, for some people uh, comforting and for some people they feel oppressive. I've talked about this quite a bit. There's a range in feelings here. But right now, we have five requirements and mandates by the state. And uh, these five things you'll see on that screen, these are five things that we need to do. Uh, there were a couple of things that were required before COVID. Uh, they're down here. We had to have a communicable disease plan, isolation space, exclusion and division twenty-two requirements. Those are also um, required. But you know, relative to COVID and state mandates, we really have five. Right now, everything else is local control. And as a reminder, we've got a great operations team, a smart people that um, are making decisions about how we're going to implement those. Face coverings are now required. Um, as we know, the governor made another announcement this week about outdoor face masks and is just this point of clarification, uh, this does not apply to K-12 students or staff during school hours. Um, that wasn't necessarily clear in, in the announcement. Um, so I think it's important to uh, realize uh, this is a strategy that um, we use last year to keep kids in person. We'll use that again. It is a, a state mandate. Um, and um, you know, we're going to focus on making sure we have, you know, reteach expectations. We've got, you know, from, we've got kids from eighteen plus down to five and we'll work with kiddos again. Um, you know, if, if they struggle with masks and things and, and we're always going to have, you know, grace as we kind of work with them. It, it is a requirement now to come into our schools that mask must be worn. And so we'll, we'll work with kiddos on that and I believe we can do that successfully starting Monday when we start. Um, we have a, a pretty recent vaccine mandate. This uh, mandate came out, uh, I believe it was last week and um, we're still waiting for more specifics about exactly what, how the rules are going to be written. Um, relative to everything from medical exemptions, religious exceptions. Um, what this means in terms of, you know, who qualifies and doesn't qualify. What does this mean for a variety of people from uh, board members to remote teachers to um, you know, referees on a volleyball court. And so uh, we're, we're waiting for some rules. We have a meeting tomorrow at two thirty. The operations team will take part and it's hosted by Department of Education who's supposed to be sharing some more about rules. And so uh, and exact specifics about what that will look like. So we're still kind of in the waiting game a little bit with this. Uh, it's another mandate um, that uh, you know, we're expected to follow and, and um, plan to uh, follow this. Uh, just waiting for more specifics. We've had, you know, um, staff ask some really good questions. We continue to ask good questions, I think, of the health authority and Department of Education. We're still waiting. Hopefully tomorrow we'll have more specifics on that. So uh, Board Chair Larson, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you. We can all uh, stop sharing here and we can, I think, launch into a um, discussion around state mandates and I can hopefully answer some questions or we can just talk generally about where we're at with those.
Right, um. Yeah, is there someone who needs to ask questions about those slides or the mandates?
I have questions. Um, at least a couple. You guys spoke earlier about uh, the importance of working with our local law enforcement. Uh, I don't know if anybody else saw our county sheriff Hanlon release a statement today saying that he will not be enforcing mask mandates because that's not his job. Is that something that we as a school district could also implement that policy? Why we're not, we're not breaking the law. We are, we have the mandates, but it's not our job to be masked police. It's not the teacher's job, just like it's not the sheriff's job. Is that, is there any legs in that chant, that discussion?
I, 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 I guess I would say that I don't think so. Um, the notion that uh, uh, we acknowledge something is the law. And that we as a, in a position of a, a certain sort of authority should not be finding a way to encourage people to follow it um, is wrong. And I, I, I don't agree with the sheriff's view on that. On the other hand, the, the state, as I understand it, has been saying that schools should not be disciplining children. That we should be finding other ways to enforce the rules. And I know in the time that I've been on the school board, there's been a a movement away from the uh, uh, slapping kids on the hand with this, with a ruler when they misbehave. To finding other ways for positive behavioral uh, improvement. And I, I'm, I am curious to know how the school district plans to enforce this with that modern idea of that enforcement means something other than punishment. That, that is an interesting area for discussion, but it may be premature since we don't necessarily know what the rules are going to be.
Is there a plan for that um, at this point, Jared, for um, uh, you know, will we dismiss a child?
Right. So we do, we do have a plan. I think the important thing to realize on mass is this is not, this is not new uncharted territory for us. We spent last year in this world. Um, with, you know, with kiddos and parents. So we do have a plan in place. I don't anticipate that we're, I mean, we had registration last week at our secondary schools and we implemented the mask policy there. We really had no issues with that. If there was a concern of a parent, it was addressed really professionally. Um, you know, we're, we're going to have, we'll always have a range. We do want to really center on, on helping parents understand the why. This is a state mandate and you know, I can talk uh, all night if you want to about, you know, some of the balance that we've had as an organization working around um, you know, fines and liability and you know, what would happen with licensure and those kind of things. But really, as, as we take a look at this, we do have a plan. I think we'll, I don't think this is going to be something that impedes um, the process of getting kids back into school next year. I really think, or next week. Um, I think we have staff that will work with parents on this and work with kids on this. And I think that uh, we did it last year really kind of without a hitch. And I think, I think we'll see that, that um, I think we'll see that we can do this next week without, you know, really uh, an issue. I will say this, I, and I don't, I'm not encouraging more people necessarily to, to contact me, but it's in my estimation, I received probably, you know, I, I want to say in the first day of that announcement, I probably had maybe three hundred emails in the first day of the mask announcement. I think I, if I counted right, I think I got over a thousand emails from parents on both sides. Majority though, about seventy, thirty were really in uh, concerned about the mask mandates. Um, those seem to have slowed down. I'm not sure if people are worn out, if they feel like it's already going to be the law, or if they've, are looking at the COVID rates exploding in the county. And they're seeing the fact that we've got a hospital with, you know, eighty-one hospitalized people and COVID rates that are uh, you know, leading the country or at least the West Coast right now. I'm not sure which it is, but there seems to be, at least from my small window of the world, a little less anxiety about the masks and maybe a little more anxiety about the situation of disease in the community. At least that's what I'm seeing right now.
Right. That's what I was feeling too from, from just community members that uh, you know, we do want the kids in school um, first and foremost. So um, I, I think uh, we talk about the whole child. You know, that was quite a bit of our presentation on really caring for the whole child. And I think that, you know, has been the biggest concern that the whole child may not be fully being cared for with having to wear the mask for, for the six hours or whatever they're in school. Um, but I don't think it's going to be the, the battle that people want to die on. Um, they would rather uh, you know, have the kids there. Um, but I think just knowing that we've acknowledged that um, there, you know, there are concerns for the whole child and s, and some of that is very valid too. Um, mentally, we're talking a lot about mental health issues and um, you know, all of those are really important in educating our kids. So we, we want to take that into consideration and, and consider that too, which I think, you know, you have done and we are going to do as a district. It seems like all of the mental health um, staff that we're adding, I'm really happy about that because I think it's needed. Especially after COVID and lockdowns last year. But um, I think, you know, it's something that uh, I think as long as, I, I'll be looking forward to the a little more statistics. We talked about maybe having Dr. Dan um, maybe come and share with us too in the maybe next board meeting, just how it's, what the numbers are regarding school age children themselves. What's going on um, with COVID and, and how they're being affected um, at, as children. So um, yeah, if, and you indicated he might, he would be willing to come and maybe be a participant in sharing with us.
Yeah, I have, and if the board wants to do that, we could, I'll certainly help get that set up.
Um, yeah, and I would say um, sometimes when people come to me very frustrated, I just have to remind them where we were last September. And for my kids, the opportunity to be in the building all day with their teachers, even if they have to wear a mask is so much better than being on a computer all day and not seeing their teachers in person for months on end. That sometimes I'm just like, I, we got to count our blessings, right? And I, I can't even tell you how excited my kids are to go back to school and the masks are um, they're going to deal with it. It's not their favorite thing, um, especially my youngest, but they're going to deal with it because they, and even I saw it last year, especially in our elementary as um, they got to go back and then they had to come home again and then they got to go back and uh, even with a mask, it's so much better for our kids to get to be there in person all day. So that's, that's my approach right now is just trying to focus on the fact that um, we get to have them there.
I'll be honest, I think it sends a terrible message to want to fight the mask mandate in schools when the community is struggling to staff a hospital to contain uh, an infection that is going crazy. I think it sends a message that um, everything's fine, when in reality, everything's not fine. Our community is struggling to uh, control this and to take this seriously. And to be honest, I don't like telling people what to do. I, I hate it, but we are not at the right moment to be fighting this. We need to rally as a community and we need to encourage people to make smart decisions and get their damn vaccine and to be smart and socially distanced and wear a mask. That's what we need to do. We don't, this is the wrong time to be fighting a mask mandate, in my opinion.
Well, are we prepared for if somebody shows up Monday morning without a mask? Is there a policy in place? Like what will be the procedure for dealing with that student when they show up Monday morning?
We do. We've got, uh, we work with principals on that and I feel pretty confident that it's, you know, we're not going to see, you know, what we won't have is, we won't have a uh, we planned to not have a fiasco in a building that disrupts education. Quite frankly, we'll work with parents and work with, you know, it's a, a little different path when it's a kiddo that comes in. It's like, I just don't want to wear this, right? That's a little different path. Um, you know, if we've got adults there that, you know, you, you know, you can't have a, my kid can't wear, is not wearing a mask, you're not going to put them on. It's a little different process we'll go through, just working with a parent on the why. And we have great people in our, in our community. I think they totally understand. They get this and um, you know, if somebody, I mean, essentially what happens is if a parent says, you know, my kid's not coming to school without a mask on, then isn't it great? We have some other options for those parents and those options will be in place if a parent chooses not to. And it's a parent decision. If they really feel like they, they don't want to have a kid with a mask, then that's what it'll be. Um, we've got some great virtual options. Uh, we've got a hundred and twenty kids that have enrolled. We're adding about twenty a day in our virtual school. And it's a great option if parents are like, you know, I just, I, I don't feel comfortable with the mask. Um, and again, well, we're, we have a soft start to start the year. We're starting on Monday, Kendy's sixth and ninth graders. Tuesday, we'll have our elementary schools there and then our uh, sixth, seventh graders and then our uh, uh, ninth and tenth graders. Um, and Wednesday we'll have all, all kiddos in class and often go in. And I think, I think it's, we do have a plan. We'll work with principals on that. I'm not concerned operationally how that will be. Uh, we've probably overplanned that. And uh, you know, I don't anticipate we're going to have an issue with that.
One more quick one. When I was looking at the registration side, you, it said you had to either pick full-time online or full-time in person. Is that going to be transferable? Are people going to be able to switch between those two options as this goes forward or they, or is that what it said on the line? You're stuck. You kind of pick one or the other at the beginning of the year and that's it.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that or uh, anybody can pop in here. You know, we, we um, we're, we're going to have some, we'll have flexibility for parents. What we're trying to avoid is a, is a, I mean, ideally at the secondary school, if you want to go this semester, it makes a lot of sense, right? But we're not going to, we're going to focus first on kids and we might have what we hope to see as a sharp decrease in rates. That allow parents to feel comfortable and we'll figure that piece out. If a parent, and I talked to one yesterday, a parent who was super concerned about, do I, I just don't know about staying the year. And we can't predict a year. And so we're going to provide the flexibility for people to kind of come back. What we don't want to have is that carousel that's not good for kids, right? Of, you're going to start online and, and the, the, the options we have at six twelve through Apex are a little harder to kind of start, stop, start, stop. Um, because of course, the classwork is moving in both spaces. So you're trying to jump back in as a kiddo. And what's an asynchronous versus an online. But yes, we will work with parents on how to make that work. I think there's been a perception that's going to be pretty rigid. Um, and we'll work with parents as, as they feel more comfortable in getting back into class. We just want to, we'll, we'll work with them individually. Uh, so we won't have a system that's, some districts have had a pretty in stone choose today and we'll see you next year. There's your choice. That's not the way we're going to work. I, I will mention just one other quick thing uh, that maybe could be on your minds. It's certainly been on my mind a little bit and it's just to run enrollment. There's been some questions around like, you know, if we follow these mandates and of course we're planning to do that, but you know, if we follow these mandates, what does that mean in terms of enrollment? Um, we're actually up as of today, four hundred and fourteen kids from last year. Um, and that's a real positive. Um, and that would be over the twenty uh, twenty-one school year. Um, the high school is actually up two hundred kids from September of two thousand nineteen. They were actually at fifteen sixty-eight and they're at seventeen sixty-eight as of this afternoon. So we're seeing, we're seeing that increase of kids kind of come back. And what's interesting about this, and this is a little bit, you know, I don't know the exact data behind this, but from what I see in terms of people coming to the district, there seems to be a sense of relief that our school district has been pretty open, that we're going to follow and keep kids safe. And we've seen uh, an influx of kiddos uh, across the county that are asking to come. Um, I think just because we've been pretty consistent around, hey, we're going to, we're going to focus on kids. We'll take care of folks. But um, in terms of just a, a summary of where we're at enrollment wise, if that's a concern, it certainly has been a concern of us of ours in terms of overall enrollment. It looks like um, we're still down from September of two thousand nineteen, about a hundred kids, a hundred and twelve. Uh, but we're up four hundred and fourteen from last year. So that's a really good sign. We've had more and more kiddos coming each day. Any other thoughts about this? Um, and again, I acknowledge the frustration um, of probably members of the board and throughout the community, we've really Of probably members of the board and throughout the community. We've really tried to handle this in a way that focuses on getting our kids back in person.
I have something I'd like to say when you're done.
Please, no, go ahead.
Just a reminder, unless I've been sleeping, you know, state's gonna look at the numbers and things. Probably in the, later in the fall and maybe the mask will go away. You know, right, right now, the numbers, unless your head's in the sand. The numbers are just terrible. And I, I have to, I have to say one more thing. I think it'd be really wise to have Dr. Bob. At a board meeting. I listened to two people, maybe three, maybe three. And one, of course, is my heavenly father. Second one is Dr. Bob. He, I may not always agree with him. But this is a man and his family that has given so much to this community to try to keep this community. Safe. And he gets, he's, he gets beat up like, I, I just don't understand it. You know, Charles and I had a chance to serve with his wife on the board for just a few years. And just a really neat family and. He's a great guy, smart. And I wish more people would listen to him. So I think it would be really wise to have him at a board meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think too, I would like to have him give some numbers. You know, regarding the kids that are being affected. Which we didn't have so much of that with, with, without the D variant coming. Kids seem to be kind of out of the picture for the large part. But, you know, now we're seeing things somewhat different. I just, I think it would be good to see how, you know, what those numbers really reflect. What the, what the data is with that. Cause you know, they're, the kids are, they're kind of, they are paying a price. You know, by being the ones that are being mandated to, to mask for so long during the day. A lot of us are home, we're, we're, we're not having to wear it all, all day. Now.
And I would tell you that my husband, who's a physician, wears a mask all day, every day. And has his entire career to protect his patients and to protect people. There are lots of people who have to wear a mask all day, every day. And. It's. It is hard on the kids. I, I'm gonna tell you right now, it's nobody's favorite thing. But I will also tell you that. I, my husband's a pretty unflappable person in general and he's pretty flat right now. It's, it's scary and it's really hard for our medical community right now with what's happening. So I. I appreciate your sentiments, but I really do think we need to just encourage our kids to just mask up. And try to be positive and grateful for the things that are happening. I was really heartened to see the good things that are going on in our school and those teachers and administrators that have all these systems in place. To get going with our kids, to make those connections, to teach, to help them find those passions and to engage.
So. Yeah, I, I do, I agree with you. I, I agree. I'm not, I'm not resistant to that. I just, you know, it's, it, it, I also see the other, you know, the parents. Concerned for their kids as well. And, and so, you know, I think as representatives of the community, we have to also represent that.
Absolutely. And, and I do really appreciate and respect and, and I've lived all over the country. And one great thing about Oregon and one great thing about Roseburg School District. Is that we have options in place. And they, we've set up the virtual school. Our homeschool students can still participate in those extracurricular activities. If parents wanna do that, our homeschool kids can come. You know, in, I don't know with COVID protocols, but in normal years, our homeschool kids could come for a band or come for orchestra. Or choir, I guess. We don't do orchestra. But. I, I, I'm, I do appreciate and I, I understand your perspective. And I do appreciate that we do try to respect what parents want to do.
Yes. I just think that's important too, for them.
All right, well, if we are done discussing for this evening, I'm gonna just, it's a work session, not a meeting. So I don't know how official I need to be. But thank you everyone for participating. I'm sure we will be getting more updates, especially after Jared has his meeting tomorrow. I look forward to hearing what he learns. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.